Today, we're going to surprise people with the taste of activity.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to order. I would like to make a brief announcement. I would like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to order. I would like to make a brief announcement, which has also been distributed for the public record. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. Public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law, and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws, which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. May I now request that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphone or your BlackBerry? Thank you. As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. In anticipation of trustee Kathleen Pacilli's report later at this meeting that will list the names and affiliations of student honorees, I would like to note that a very important winning trend has developed at CUNY in recent years, which should make us all very proud. CUNY students have won seven Harry S. Truman scholarships since 2005, the most recent being two CUNY BA students from City College, one at Macaulay Honors College and the other in the CCNY honors program. So, CUNY is fast becoming the Truman Show. You see, that's what happens if you try to... Since 2004, 15 CUNY students have won Barry M. Goldwater scholarships, given to undergraduates excelling in the sciences. Four CUNY students won in 2011, representing the most Goldwater scholarships ever won in CUNY's history. They include the first-ever Goldwater Scholar from the College of Staten Island, who is a Macaulay Honors College student. CUNY students have won a total of 24 Math for America fellowships since 2004. This highly selective five-year program provides a $100,000 stipend to students committed to teaching math in public schools. This year, CUNY had two winners, has two winners, from the City College and from Lehman Since 2006, 20 CUNY students have won prestigious National Science Foundation graduate research fellowships. The CUNY winners in 2011, total four in number. And since 2005, CUNY has had four Rhodes Scholars, the most recent being a Brooklyn College student who won for 2011, who was the only Rhodes winner attending any college in the state of New York. Many of these winners are Macaulay Honors College undergraduates studying at participating CUNY senior colleges. The combination of Macaulay Honors College, increases in high academic achievers attending CUNY overall, and comprehensive programs involving faculty, staff, and alumni mentors taken together are key factors behind this winning trend. So, thank you to all who have taken part in these programs. We expect even greater progress in the years ahead. I want to thank trustees Rita DiMartino, Ugo Morales, and Corey Provost, as well as members of the Chancellery and College Presidents, faculty, and students for participating in the Somos el Futuro conference on the weekend of April 1 to April 3 in Albany. The annual CUNY lunch was well attended, as was the 14th CUNY-SUNY Model Senate Session, both of which had a big turnout of elected officials. Trustee Kathleen Pacilli gave a presentation on financial literacy at John Jay to over 70 students from the Economics Club and the Student Government. She advised the students to focus on financial independence and encouraged them to follow up with Vice Chancellor Sanchez's office about a CUNY-wide initiative on financial literacy. Thank you, Kay, and also for recently representing CUNY at its Big Apple Jobs Fair. I would like to report that the Board held its Staten Island Borough hearing on Monday, March 21, 2011. Trustee Pacilli chaired the hearing, that was also attended by trustees Wellington Chen, Rita DiMartino, and Professor Sandy Cooper, members of the Chancellery, and College of Staten Island President Tomas Morales. The Board held its Queens Borough hearing on April 11, 2011. Wellington Chen chaired this hearing, which was also attended by trustees Judah Gribitz, Corey Provost, and again Professor Sandy Cooper, members of the Chancellery and the Queens College Presidents as well. A summary of these proceedings has been circulated to the trustees and the chancellor's cabinet, and transcripts are available in the office of the secretary. The Board's next Borough hearing will take place in the Bronx on Monday, June 20, 2011, at Hostos Community College. And last, but certainly not least, are the latest CUNY sports results. In Community College Baseball Region 2, Bronx Community College won their ninth CUNY Athletic Conference Municipal Credit Union Baseball Championship at MCU Park on Wednesday in a 6-5 nail-biter over number-one seed Queensborough Community College. Bronx Community College's Bernie Palanco was named the game's most valuable player. And now, I would like to call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Princeton Review named Hunter College one of the top 10 2011 Best Value Public Colleges in the Nation for the third consecutive year, and Baruch College's Zicklin School of Business was ranked number-one for value and a top 100 program by the U.S. News &amp; World Report listing of graduate schools. Congratulations to both. Quite a few faculty members from across the university have received prestigious academic honors. They include: College of Staten Island Chemistry Professor Michelle Kruck was recently listed as number 72 of the most highly cited chemists in the world by Thomson Reuters. Hunter College Distinguished Professor Nancy Foner was elected to the American Academy of Arts and Sciences. Brooklyn College Professor Jennifer McCoy was awarded a 2011 Guggenheim Fellowship to assist research and artistic creation. Hunter College Distinguished Professor Tom Slay won the John Updike Award, while Hunter College Distinguished Lecturer Colin McCain will receive the Arts and Letters Award in Literature. Both honors are from the American Academy of Arts and Letters. Queens College Professor Michael Krasner received a Fulbright Fellowship to teach at Southern Denmark University. And College Distinguished Professor Mina Alexander was selected for a Fulbright Specialist Project in Venice, Italy. Queens faculty member Ashaki Roof received a 2000 Woodrow Wilson Andrew Mellon Foundation Career Enhancement Fellowship for junior faculty. Medgar Evers College Professor and playwright Thomas Bradshaw received a New Voices New York Fellowship from the Lark Play Development Center. And finally, New York City College of Technology Professor Emeritus Jesse McCarrill was honored with a Lifetime Achievement Award by the National Association for the Study and Performance of African-American Music. Congratulations to all. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I now call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors.
Four Macaulay Honors College students were among 300 nationally who won prestigious 2011-2012 Barry M. Goldwater scholarships. They are: Macaulay's Honors College student Mark Barham, the first ever as a winner from the College of Staten Island; Joseph Camerata; and Celine Juree from Hunter College; and Johnson Ho from City College, Grove School of Engineering. Congratulations all. Two City College CUNY BA students were named 2011 Harry S. Truman Scholars, and Macaulay Honors College student Adeli Otte; and CCNY Honors College student Gareth Rhodes are the fourth and fifth students from City College to receive this prestigious scholarship. Congratulations to you both. Four CUNY students have won prestigious 2011 National Science Foundation Graduate Research Fellowships. They are: Lena Mercedes Gonzalez from Hunter College; Anthony Pang; and Evelyn Faith Patterson from City College; and Arthur Parseneyat, who is a Macaulay Honors College student at Queens College. Congratulations all. Graduating City College Senior Jian Liu and Lehman Senior Anne-Marie Alcosier have each won a Math for America Fellowship. This highly selective five-year program provides $100,000 stipend to students committed to teaching math in public schools. Congratulations. Ten students from the CUNY-wide class of 2013 have won three-year Jeanette K. Watson fellowships with paid summer internships. They are Kyle Atayadi, Agnisa Gugalaia, and then Macaulay Honors College students at Hunter College. Macaulay Honors College students Elizabeth Kelman and Nicholas Macaluso, as well as Jose Esteban Rodriguez Alvarario, all three of whom are City College students. Estela Bruton and Macaulay Honors College student Kathleen McCarter, both of whom are from Brooklyn College. Michelle Chan, a Macaulay Honors College student from Queens College; Paul Oliver from the College of Staten Island; and Lehman College student Sophia Perlaza. Congratulations to all of you. Kingsborough Community College students Mitchell Steingart and Janice Lewis received the 2011 Frank Lanza Memorial Scholarships from the American Association of Community Colleges and Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society. Congratulations. Six Queens College undergraduate students received a meritorious rating for their paper and placed among the top 15% of 2,775 teams participating from around the world at an international mathematical competition online. Congratulations. CUNY BA 2011 candidate Julia Jendro has received a Fulbright Fellowship, excuse me, a Fulbright Fellowship, and CUNY BA alumna Esther Wood has received a Fulbright Hays Grant, which will fund her doctoral dissertation. Congratulations to you both. Medgar Evers College student Slavana Farina is one of 24 MBA Barcardi Gold Standard Academic Scholarships of $10,000. Congratulations. Bronx Community College student Cynthia Morales was one of 60 scholars selected to receive a Jack Kent Cooke Foundation undergraduate transfer scholarship of up to $30,000 per year. Bronx Community College students Hailema Tuba and Carmen Perez were selected as first-team members of the 2011 All-New York Academic Team for the Phi Theta Kappa International Honor Society. Hailematu has also been selected as a 2011 Coca-Cola Community College Academic Team Bronze Scholar. Julia Laura was accepted to the National Center for Atmospheric Research Undergraduate Leadership Workshop in Denver, and Alejandro Prieto was selected for the Geoscience Research at Storm Peak for the 2011 Summer Program. Congratulations Bronx Community College. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. The way our students are doing, we're going to have to start beginning these meetings a little earlier.
I think so.
A list of grants and gifts received by the university since our February 28, 2011 meeting is available on the table and in your calendar book. I'd like now to call on Chancellor Goldstein for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me begin by reporting that fall 2011 freshman applications received in admitted students are both up by 11% compared to the same time last year. This has been a monotone increasing function now for the past several years, and there's going to come a point in time, as I have said before, that tremendous stress is going to be placed on the university to accommodate all of the students that want to study at this institution. It is without debate that so much of our place in the marketplace of competing institutions, I think, translates to the sense that this university has really progressed in ways that now is highly competitive with respect to many other institutions. What's interesting in these data is that we continue to see a very strong uptick in high-performing students, students whose academic records are really stellar, and that obviously pleases us all greatly. Turning to the state budget, I have circulated to all the trustees an analysis of the adopted state budget, which, as expected, and I warned the university community about this months ago, that there would be stress placed on our budget again, as we have seen in the past two years, and we again see a diminution of our resources. This year, for the senior colleges, about $95 million, and state aid for our community colleges, although some of it was restored, continues to be under stress as well. Unfortunately, our revenue for next year pursuant to the tuition increase that this Board approved in January got caught up in some problems at the state level that we are still trying to unravel. I am hopeful that we will, in the end, prevail and have the kind of revenue that we will need to move the university forward. I will tell you that in our revenue budget, we do have sufficient leeway to spend monies that would take us to the equivalent of that particular tuition increase, but I will be meeting later this week with top members of the governor's inner circle to see if we could come to some resolution on this important matter. Obviously, we will continue to press for capital investments, which is critical for the university, but it's also critical for job creation, and we've made that pitch very, very clear to the governor directly and to other members of the state legislature. I did have a meeting with Lieutenant Governor Duffy several weeks ago, talking about the City University's participation in the New York City Regional Economic Development Council, and very soon, I believe, the governor will make some announcements, and I will report that very quickly to the Board as well. Moving to the city side, the mayor's executive budget is expected on May 5, and we expect to work with the mayor and the city council on what we expect to see as restorations to cuts proposed in the mayor's preliminary budget that was released in February. As I previously reported to the Board, Mayor Bloomberg recently announced, well, now it's not so recent, it was several months ago, announced that New York City would like to partner with the university to develop and operate an engineering school or an applied science school here in New York City to help strengthen the city's applied sciences capabilities, particularly in fields which lend themselves to commercialization. I reported to this Board that when that announcement was made, I initiated a conference call with the CEOs of Columbia University, New York University, Mount Sinai, and others in the city to see if we can coordinate some of our responses, and I'm pleased to report that CUNY did submit two preliminary proposals, one in collaboration with New York University, IBM Carnegie Mellon, and the University of Toronto. We already had meetings to discuss that particular joint proposal. The other proposal is with Columbia University. We have yet to have a formal discussion about that proposal. I'd like to acknowledge the very good work of Vice Chancellor Jillian Small, who I asked to lead the effort, and Jillian, I thank you for that in helping to coordinate that important set of discussions. On April 7, Mayor Bloomberg, as all of you know, appointed Dennis Walcott as chancellor to the New York City Department of Education. Dennis Walcott and I, and members of the Chancellery, and I suspect members of the presidents, know Dennis Walcott well. We've worked with him for several years, and I would imagine that over the time that he will be sitting in office, there will be plenty of opportunities for us to continue the unprecedented amount and depth of the collaboration between these two great systems. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, I'm pleased to announce an update on the ASAP three-year pilot program, this accelerated study of associate programs. You remember that Mayor Bloomberg and I had a discussion about such a pilot program because I was deeply concerned about graduation rates at community colleges, not only here in New York, but across the United States. He agreed to fund a pilot, a $20 million pilot program. I indicated at that breakfast that I thought we could take the graduation rates, the three-year graduation rates, which hovered for an equivalent cohort of about 24%, and that we could double it to 50%. That was a little audacious, but I'm pleased to report, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, that of the original 2007 ASAP cohort, 55% graduated in three years, five percentage points above our ambitious target of 50%. As I've said, a comparative group at CUNY, that is, students with the same academic profile as the ASAP students but who didn't participate in that program, had graduation rates of 24% in three years. There are very few paradigm shifts, it's a tired phrase, but this is a very good example that we, as a university, are capable of taking on longstanding problems and thinking creatively, thinking in ways that ultimately would benefit our students. I'd also like to report that, in addition, 48% of the ASAP students transferred to a four-year college to continue their studies compared to 35% of a comparison group. So, in total, 63% of the ASAP students either graduated and/or transferred to a four-year institution compared to 44% of the comparison group. I'd like to really acknowledge and commend our community college presidents, who were really the ones right at the very beginning that worked with the Chancellery to make this program successful. I'd like to acknowledge the very good work of senior university dean John Mogalescu, who I asked to really lead the effort, and certainly university director of ASAP, Donna Linderman, and so many others who have made this program such a success, and of course, great thanks to Mayor Bloomberg, who had the faith in us to make that investment, and that spurred our interest in developing a seventh community college for the university based on some of the principles that we learned from ASAP, and we have great hopes for that important effort on a going-forward basis. I'm also pleased to report that on Thursday, April 21, the university hosted its first-ever CUNY philanthropy forum as part of our ongoing efforts to develop and expand a true culture of philanthropy in support of our colleges. The event provided development staff and other members of the university community an opportunity to engage in dialogues with value supporters and key industry leaders. Particularly like to thank Chairman Benno Schmidt, who was interviewed by a good friend, Jack Rosenthal, for his participation. Benno, I understand, although I wasn't in the room, that it was lively and very informative. Other people that participated: Si Sternberg, a City College alumnus; Larry Zicklin, a City College, Baruch College alumnus; Mark Kuperberg from Queensborough Community College; Leonard Tau from Brooklyn College. He's an alumnus, and his daughter... Leonard Tao from Brooklyn College, he's an alumnus, and his daughter Emily Tao, and we had many foundations represented. I'm pleased to report that we are on target in the next couple of months to have raised two billion dollars, that's not two million, two billion dollars. You remember that the chairman and I stood up in 2004 and said that we intend to raise one point two billion dollars. Benno, do you remember people looking at us like we were from out of space, that this would never happen? We intend to increase that target to three billion dollars, and I have no doubt that in the next four years, we will get to the three-billion-dollar figure for the university. And therefore, we are enclosing, we are starting to enclose in real money here, which have a material benefit for the university as well. I have reported that we took the lead in 2008 and again in 2010, inviting the top CEOs of public higher education from the United States to talk about the future of public education. And one of the themes that was common to both of those important summits, and when I say we had the very best, we had the very best in public higher education, the theme was, we have to reimagine how we support public higher education through a myriad of approaches, but one fundamental approach must be on philanthropy. CUNY was very late in the game. I don't have to remind you that it was merely ten, eleven, twelve years ago that the university collectively was raising forty-five million dollars. We are now well over the two-hundred-million-dollar-a-year number for this university, and that's still not enough. We have to continue to ramp that up. I do want to thank Dean Carlos Flynn, who helped organize that philanthropy forum, and a very successful event. And again, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for your participation. As we think about raising money for the university, it is very much aligned with our effort to enhance our position in the marketplace of universities in the STEM disciplines. A central part of this effort should be for faculty recruiting and retaining first-class science faculty, and we are working mightily under great stress with our budgets provided by the state of New York. But that's not deterring us from continuing to think and trying to attract to this university the best scholar-teachers that we can. We have created a central fund to help our presidents attract to this university great people in the sciences. I met with a group of presidents just a few weeks ago and said that I have already raised a few million dollars that I'm going to set aside to provide matching grants to each president, to allow the president to have bridge financing for about three years to get the kind of faculty that they need to enhance their goals in creating vibrancy in the STEM disciplines. And I'm pleased to say that so far, we have made, and this meeting just took place about three weeks ago, we have already made a commitment for a very prominent mathematician that we are hoping to attract to the graduate school and university center. We can use these funds for startup faculty, for startup capital on salary enhancements, package to assist in retention of mid-career faculty, help in getting the bridge financing for endowed scholarships, endowed chairs, and I'm sure that the presidents will rise to the occasion as we continue to build the great faculty that we are so proud of. The Council of Presidents Retreat, which we do yearly, now took place on March 11th at Roosevelt House at Hunter College. President Rapp was our host, and thank you for hosting it. It is, for those of you that have not been to Roosevelt House, please come, it's really an extraordinary place with, obviously, a fabulous history. The one-day meeting focused on three main topics: the entrepreneurial university, consistent with the brief remarks I said about how we need to start reimagining financing of the university; the big issue on student transfer and general education, we had wonderful meetings on that topic; and the academic future of CUNY with the next master plan due next year. And we will be talking with the board about some of those themes very shortly. I continue on my road show. It's exhausting, but I am on the road, visiting campuses. I did this three years ago. I must say that at each campus, I've had several hundreds of faculty and students. I talked for about a half hour about national issues in public higher education, disaggregate those issues down to CUNY, take lots of questions. So far, I've been to City College, Lehman College, Bronx Community College, York College, our law school, Kingsborough Community College, Queensborough Community College, LaGuardia Community College, Queens College, the College of Staten Island, and just a few days ago, a very large meeting. Antonio, thank you for bringing out so many faculty and students. It was an extraordinary meeting, and I thank you. Tomorrow, I visit the graduate school. I then head to Medgar Evers, will take a summer respite to pause for the PMP meetings with each of the presidents, and then start up again in September with my first visit to John Jay College. I'm pleased to report that the ninth CUNY Daily News Citizenship Now call-in took place last week from April 25th through April 29th, with over four hundred and fifty volunteers answering calls. Over twelve thousand New Yorkers were assisted, bringing the total number served in the nine call-ins to almost a hundred thousand people who have been helped. These are people who don't have the capital, don't have the connections, don't have access to legal services, and I am very supportive of this. This has been the brainchild of Jay Hirschenson, who thought of the idea. And Jay, again, I've said it many times, I want to compliment you on staying with this. It really is quite important. Jay was successful in getting Mayor Bloomberg, Senator Schumer, Senator Gillibrand, Speaker Silver, State Controller DeNapoli, City Council Controller Lou, among a parade of other elected officials. So, great work to Jay, and especially Alan Wernick. Professor Alan Wernick, who is our real star in putting together the necessary people that have the talent and experience to answer the questions. I'd like to thank Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs, Frank Sanchez, for overseeing CUNY's Japan relief efforts, and in general, for his sustained outreach to CUNY campuses during his first hundred days here at the university. Frank, your work has been exemplary. You know, for someone who didn't know New York City well at all, it's wonderful to see how you've taken the reins and really take charge there, and I really am deeply grateful for your efforts. Congratulations to President Regina Perugia on Kingsborough Community College's selection as one of the nation's one hundred and twenty best community colleges by the Aspen Institute College Excellence Program. This distinction allows Kingsborough to compete for a million dollars in prize money, to be announced in December of 2011. We certainly will be rooting for you. For the first time in the history of the CUNY Law School, U.S. News and World Report moved the institution from the fourth tier up a notch to the third tier. That's a big deal for us, we haven't been there before, and ranked it overall at about one hundred and twentieth. But with our extraordinary dean there and the fabulous faculty that we've been able to recruit, and the wonderful students that are now coming to the CUNY Law School, the Law School is continuing in its effort moving up the line. Also, the Law School has maintained its top-ten clinical ranking, moving from sixth place to third place in the nation for clinical programs. So, Michelle, congratulations to you, and please convey to all of your faculty and students how pleased we are with where the Law School is going. I commend President Ricardo Fernandez, who will be honored with the Education Award by ASPira of New York at its 50th anniversary celebration on May 19th. Nicely done, Ricardo. Also, President Felix Metos Rodriguez will be honored by the Association of Dominican American Supervisors and Administrators on the occasion of their 11th gala on May 13th. And I am pleased to announce that CUNY TV won three Emmy Awards for Nueva York after garnering eight nominations. So congratulations to Bob Isaacson and company. And on just a very personal note, I want to acknowledge the passing of a great Baruch College alumnus, Sidney Harmon, who died, who died just a few weeks ago. He was the class of 1939. I was pleased to say a few words about Sidney Harmon at the Baruch Gala the other night, and pleased to introduce Mitch Wallerstein. Mitch, there was a lot of energy in the room, especially about your appointment, and you're going to be a true, as I said that night, catalytic event in the world of Baruch College. And that completes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Are there comments or questions for the chancellor? I'd like to say that it was a pleasure to participate in the philanthropy forum, and I do think that I was able to offer a fundamental insight based on my experience at Yale, and that is, that no development event should ever be without benefit of alcoholic beverages.[1404.13][1404.13](Laughter). I'm delighted to say that after an abstemious lunch, Carlos managed to find some wine and cheese and ended the day on a proper philanthropic note.[1420.83][1420.83](Laughter). Other comments?[1425.26][1425.26](Laughter). We have now policy items requiring a vote. First, I would like to move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for May 2nd, 2011. You have copies of the report on the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Duly noted. Next, I would like to move the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of February 28th, 2011. You'll find a copy of the draft minutes in Section Two of your meeting books. Are there any comments on the minutes or suggested revisions? If not, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? We'll move now to our committee reports, and we will hear first from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs trustee Joe Loda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs and the Subcommittee on Investment met in joint session on April 4th. After approval of the minutes of the Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting on January 31st of this year, the committee approved the following resolutions. Calendar Item 3A is a resolution authorize the General Counsel to execute contracts on behalf of the university to purchase unarmed security guard services from Allied Barton Security Services, Allied Andrews International, FJC Security Services, Securitas Services, and U.S. Security Associates pursuant to law and university regulations. Such contracts shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $12.6 million for the period of March of this year through December of this year. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3A.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there questions for the committee on Item 3A? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Abstentions? That carries.
Calendar Item 3B is a resolution authorize the General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the university to purchase Enterprise Library membership and various online database and cataloging services from Online Computer Library Center, or OCLC. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $1.8 million. The contract shall be awarded pursuant to law and university regulations for the three-year term, July 1, 2011 through June 20, 2014. CUNY previously contracted for services with NYLink, who is phasing out its operations this June. The contract with OCLC will permit the continuation of these mission-critical university-wide services. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3B.
I'm happy to second that. Are there questions on the item? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Abstentions? Carries.
Calendar Item 3C is a resolution authorize the City University to adopt a revised application for admission fee of $60 effective June 1, 2011 for the CUNY School of Law. And be it further resolved that the CUNY School of Law be authorized to accept such fee through processing facility of, through the processing facility of the Law School Admissions Council, or ELSAC, pursuant to the normal ELSAC processing fee, and be it further resolved that such a fee be waived, may be waived by the dean of the law school for any applicants whose law school admission test fee was waived by ELSAC, or in other cases, of extreme financial hardship. The increase from $50 to $60 is to be applied to handling of online application process by ELSAC. The increased fee is similar to what other law schools in the country charge and allows the City University Law School to remain competitive with the market. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3C.
I'm happy to second that. Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Abstentions? That carries.
Following the approval of Action Items A, B, and C by the committee, Associate Vice Chancellor Matthew Sapiensum gave an update on the city and state budgets, and following the Associate Vice Chancellor's report, the Subcommittee on Investment was convened. After approval of the minutes of the committees, of the minutes of the meeting of the Subcommittee on Investment on February 7th, the university's chief investment officer, Janet Crone, reported on the university's investment portfolio. Immediately following Ms. Crone's report, the Subcommittee went into executive session where they received an update on the New York Prudent Management of Institutions Funds Act by Daniel Kurtz, an attorney with SCADNARPs, followed by a briefing on the recommended changes to the university's investment policy as a result of the state law by Mr. Thomas Smith Jepson of Cambridge Associates. Following the Cambridge Associates briefing, the Subcommittee exited the executive session, proceeded to approve the resolution to amend the university's investment policy, and approved the resolution regarding the fiscal 2012 spending rate for the investment portfolio, each having been reviewed by Cambridge Associates with the Subcommittee. Subsequently, it was recommended that the amended investment policy be presented to the Fiscal Affairs Committee for its approval. At that point, the Fiscal Affairs Committee was reconvened and approved the following resolution. Calendar Item 3D is a resolution authorize the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to approve the resolution to amend the investment policy. Mr. Chairman, I approve the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3D.
I think I'm going to second that.[1796.76][1796.76](Laughter). I gather a vote is required. I gather a vote is required?
Mr. Chairman, I think there's a second resolve as well.
Not there.
That's it. In the revised agenda, there's a second resolution in which the board is being --
Oh, I see it in here. I'll read it. Sorry, it's not in the notes. Resolved that the Board of Trustees has determined in accordance with City University's spending policy, it is prudent and appropriate for the appropriation of 5% be applied for each of the four groups of similarly situated funds in the investment pool for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2012. A copy of the amended investment policy is on file with the Office of the Secretary and available to all to see.
Well, I'll still second it.[646.12][646.12](Laughter).
Thank you.[648.41][648.41](Laughter).
And comment that 5% is pretty typical of university spending rules around the country. So, any questions for the committee? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Abstentions? That carries. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll turn to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research and Committee Chair Wellington Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At its April 4th, 2011 meeting, the committee approved three policy matters. Calendar Number 4A, application to register the AAS in Emergency Medical Services at Kingsborough Community College. The AAS in Emergency Medical Services at Kingsborough Community College fills a void in collegiate education in the borough of Brooklyn. Students will earn a degree in this life-saving profession. The program will conform to national standards for EMS education, and Kingsborough will establish itself as the center for EMS education in Brooklyn. Calendar Number 4B, application to register the BA in Psychology at the School of Professional Studies of the Graduate School and University Center. This online Bachelor of Arts completion degree in psychology provides students with the opportunity to develop valuable workplace skills for a variety of contemporary employment opportunities, as well as a solid foundation for graduate study. Students will enter with a minimum of 30 credits. This online completion degree in a highly popular traditional liberal arts discipline will give adult students the flexibility to finish their degree when family or community responsibilities, work schedules, or health concerns might make it difficult for them to attend traditional face-to-face classes. Calendar Number 4C, application to modify the existing policy on academic standing at CUNY School of Law. This amendment to the academic standing rule was adopted by the Law School faculty to remove an anomaly regarding the restart policy and moves to treat all students more equitable upon readmission. This action reflects the emphasis on high academic standards that has been a key guideline for the Law School's development in recent years. Item Number 4A through 4C were approved by the committee and recommend the approval by the board.
Thank you very much. May I have a second on these items?
Second.
Are there questions for the committee? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Abstentions? Those carry.
Informational items. Dr. Low announced the formation of two academic centers. First, the Human Eco-Dynamics Research Center at Graduate School and University Center unites faculty working in crucial areas of sustainability, resilience, and the future of humans on Earth. The founding researchers of the center have an impressive record of fundraising, and all activities of the center will be supported through external grants. Second, the J. Maxx Bond Architecture Center at City College is named for J. Maxx Bond, Jr., an African-American architect of national prominence and a former dean of the School of Architecture at City College. The center is devoted to providing technical assistance, research advocacy, and planning services to socially responsible architectural projects. Dr. Low states that the April Capitol meeting is historic because it's the first board committee meeting in which all documents were made available entirely online. She thanked all those in the central administration who were instrumental in making this environmentally and financially conscious effort possible. Dr. Low reported on the systematic efforts being made to facilitate a smooth student transfer within the CUNY system. One aspect of this effort is the establishment of a general education framework for the entire system, a framework whose learning, whose leaning objectives, courses, and standards will be provided by the faculty. Dr. Low will continue communication with Capitol members about the progress on this project as her office moves toward -- with a resolution for consideration at the June meeting. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments on the information items? All right. Then we'll move to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. May I call on trustee Kathleen Facilli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs has only one action item for the board's approval. The committee met on April 4th and approved the following calendar item. Calendar Item 5A, amended CUNY policy on drugs and alcohol. The university's policy on drugs and alcohol, which was adopted on June 22nd, 2009, prohibits students from possessing or consuming alcoholic beverages in any CUNY residence hall. Although this prohibition is not limited to those under the lawful drinking age, a significant percentage of undergraduate students in CUNY residence halls are in fact younger than the lawful drinking age of 21. The university has now opened a residence that will provide housing to graduate students who attend the CUNY Graduate School. All of these graduate students are expected to be over the lawful drinking age. Accordingly, the university is amending the drug and alcohol policy to make an exception to the prohibition against alcoholic beverages for students living in the Graduate School and University Center graduate housing facilities. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report on Calendar Item 5A.
Thank you very much. Are there comments on this item? We'll turn next then to the -- yes. According to the general counsel, trustee Facilli, we need to vote on the amended policy on drugs and alcohol in the Graduate Center residence hall. So, I'll take it that you moved it?
No.
I will second it. Are there any comments or questions now? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Abstentions? That carries.[1067.72][1067.72](Laughter). Thank you very much.
That's why you didn't have any alcohol.
We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. May I call on trustee Jeffrey Weisenthal?
Yes, the committee has just this added item. At Queens College, the tennis center reconstruction will authorize the university to enter into a loan agreement with the Research Foundation on behalf of Queens College for a portion of the cost to reconstruct the tennis center. Last year, a tornado destroyed tennis bubble at the Queens College Tennis Center, which is covered by insurance procured and maintained by DASNY. DASNY has agreed to the request by Queens College to use the insurance proceeds to rebuild the structure. However, the insurance proceeds are payable upon completion of the construction as a reimbursement of funds advanced. DASNY will not begin the procurement process until it receives the funds needed to complete. Therefore, the board is -- the college will be able to supply some of the funding for this purpose from college funds and private donations, and the requested research fund loan is to provide the remaining funds necessary, and when the project is completed, Queens College will repay the Research Foundation loan from the insurance proceeds.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any questions about the tennis center?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Is there a written agreement from DASNY to the foundation or to Queens College as to their repayment schedule? I know it says they will repay when the project is completed and the funds have been received. Is there a written agreement between DASNY and CUNY?
There will be a written agreement between CUNY and the Research Foundation.
No, I'm with you on that. But they get reimbursed when the project --
Well, DASNY has committed the insurance proceeds to CUNY, and so when their project is finished, DASNY will pay the money to CUNY, and CUNY will use that money to repay.
And that commitment is in what form?
It's in a written form.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. Anything further to report? Trustee Weisenthal?
That concludes.
Thank you. I'd like now to, for item number seven, to call on our general counsel. This concerns amendments to the bylaws of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you will recall, the bylaws of the Board of Trustees require that when the bylaws are going to be amended, notice must be given at least one meeting in advance of the vote. So, this is simply notice. This is not a resolution that requires approval at today's meeting. The background of this is as follows. All of you can appreciate how very hard it is to take time from busy, everyday schedules and responsibilities to do long-term projects. When I first came to CUNY a little more than 10 years ago, I was struck by the board's bylaws, which were a somewhat unusual amalgam of provisions that you would ordinarily find in the bylaws of an organization with all kinds of really minute detailed policies on everything from job descriptions to governance, to many other areas. And a lot of these provisions, as I came to learn, as I worked with the policy, with the bylaws rather, over the years, had been superseded by provisions in the collective bargaining agreements with our unions, by college governance plans, by other policies of the board. And so, it seemed to me it was a worthwhile, long-term project to try to update these bylaws. About four or five years ago, I forced all of the attorneys in my office to take a one-day retreat to review the bylaws. Since we're in difficult fiscal times, I want to make clear that this retreat consisted of their walking from the second floor, where their offices are located, to the first floor of 80th Street, where I locked them in a conference room and fed them pizza and Coke until they had gone through every single line of the bylaws, which we did. Since then, we continued to work on that. We've consulted with other relevant vice chancellors at 80th Street and now more broadly at the campuses and other constituencies, the faculty and the students, and we think we've got a version of the bylaws that takes out all of the unnecessary and superseded provisions. It's going to be hopefully a lot easier to read and follow. It makes a few substantive changes as well, most particularly in the area of Article 15, dealing with student discipline, because coincidentally, we had had a project going for some time now to update that provision, and the two just coincidentally coincided, and so we're folding the revisions to Article 15 into these amendments as well. The notice that you have in your revised agenda goes on for a couple of pages, and I won't go into that level of detail, but it summarizes what these changes are. Many of you, at least the college presidents, all have a redlined version of it. Similar detailed redlined version is available at the Office of the Secretary of the Board for anybody else who wants to review it at that level of detail, and we will be bringing this to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration for its June meeting as a policy item, as well as to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs as an information item, and then we'll be bringing it to the board, we expect, at the June board meeting. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments for the general counsel? Yes, Professor Cooper.
Yes, thank you. In return for my not telling Mrs. Obama that you bought Coke and pizza, perhaps you would repeat publicly the fact that the college governance and the union contract sometimes supersede these bylaws so that, for example, where it says a president or designee shall convene a faculty senate, if the charter of the college states a different system, that that trumps the bylaws?
Well, generally, that's correct. That is, there are, I think it's Article 8 and Article 9 of the bylaws have final provisions in them, which says that if there is a contrary provision in a board-approved governance plan of a college, it's the governance plan that trumps the bylaws in that respect, and that is correct.
Thank you.
Are there other comments? Not since Hercules cleaned out the table.[1527.41][1527.41](Laughter). All right. We'll turn next to the approval of honorary degrees. You will find the honorary degrees listed in the last couple of pages of your meeting book. I am happy to move the approval of these honorary degrees, and I know we have some comments, but may I have a second before we turn to comments?
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Trustee Weisenthal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, forgive the indulgence. I want to raise an issue that's larger than the candidate about which I want to speak, but I want to explain why. There is a lot of disingenuous and non-intellectual activity directed against the state of Israel on campuses throughout the country, the West generally, and oftentimes the United States as well. And the reason I choose to address is there have been a couple of instances, and I don't in any way, God forbid, denigrate this university, because we are far and away better in this regard than most others, and certainly not the college in question, but I want to address in context the question of the granting of the degree to Tony Kushner. Now, about a year or so ago, if I'm not mistaken, John Jay College also issued a John Jay Justice Award to Mary Robinson, and there was an article in the Wall Street Journal, and I'll just give you a brief quote to set the stage. "Criticism of Mr. Obama's award to Mary Robinson to be officially bestowed has centered on Mrs. Robinson's central organizing role as Secretary General of the 2001 World Conference Against Racism in Durban, South Africa. Instead of concentrating on its purported objectives, Durban was virulently anti-Semitic, anti-Israel, and at least implicitly anti-American. So vile was the conference's draft declaration that Secretary of State Colin Powell correctly called it a 'throwback to the days of Zionism equals racism,' referring to the infamous 1975 U.N. General Assembly Resolution to that effect. President George Bush, whose father led the 1991 campaign that repealed the U.N. Zionism as a form of racism resolution, unhesitatingly agreed when Mr. Powell recommended the U.S. delegation leave the Durban Conference rather than legitimize the outcome. Mrs. Robinson did not see it that way then, and she has shown no remorse since. In late 2002, she described Durban's outcome as remarkably good, including on issues of the Middle East." Now to Mr. Kushner. I chose with Mr. Kushner not to look at pro-Israel websites that would give insight into his feelings of Israel. Rather, I went to the website of one Norman Finkelstein, another discredited individual that mercifully we rid ourselves of at this university, and he pridefully displays key quotes of Mr. Kushner on his website, which are accurately reflected elsewhere and by Mr. Kushner's record itself. And I quote Mr. Kushner. First, why Mr. Finkelstein praises the candidate. Kushner also deplores the brutal and illegal tactics of the IDF, which I might add is the only force of its kind in the world that has the high code of ethics that the Israel Defense Forces has, and the deliberate destruction of Palestinian culture in a systematic attempt to destroy the identity of the Palestinian people. He is also on the board of an organization which opposes the security fence, a unified Jerusalem, or military aid to Israel, recommends Norman Finkelstein's notorious books, and supports boycotting and divesting from the state of Israel. Now to Mr. Kushner's quotes. "Israel was founded in a program that, if you really want to be blunt about it, was ethnic cleansing, and that today is behaving abominably towards the Palestinian people. I've never been a Zionist. I have a problem with the idea of a Jewish state. It would be better if it never had happened." Kushner said establishing a state means F-U-C-K-I- Kushner said, "Establishing a state means F-U-C-K-I-N-G people over. However, I think that people in the late 20th and 21st century, having seen the Holocaust, having seen the 20th century and all of its horrors, cannot be complacent in the face of that." The Horowitz reporter, the Israeli reporter questioning Mr. Kushner, says, "But you are saying, then, that the very creation of the State of Israel as a Jewish state was not a good idea?" And Mr. Kushner answered, "It was a mistake." I think you get the idea. I don't want to bore you all with the details. Let me just say that when people identify themselves politically in principle or principally by these types of viewpoints, yes, it could be said by other trustees or by members of faculty that it has a chilling effect when a trustee brings up these types of matters, but I think it's up to all of us to look at fairness and to consider these things, especially when the State of Israel, which is our sole democratic ally in the area, sits in a neighborhood which is almost universally dominated by administrations which are misogynist, anti-gay, anti-Christian, and societies that are doing today to the Christians what they did to the 500,000 Jews who lived in the Arab world in 1948, at the time of the creation of the Israel-- State of Israel, dispossessing them, murdering them, deporting them. And so I have to say that even if I'm the lone dissenter, that it's time that it would be much worse for the reputation of the university not to mention this, especially after the appointment of an individual at Brooklyn College, Mr. Overton, who has some equally specious scholarship. Thank you, Mr. Chan.
Thank you very much. Are there other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, yes. Professor Cooper?
On another matter, I just wish to point out to the trustees that there's a letter in their packet that I wrote on behalf of my colleagues at the College of Staten Island regarding one of the three nominees for an honorary degree. The letter is self-explanatory, so is the attachment from the faculty. And while I'm on the subject of letters, the second letter is in regard to the issue of general education, which I'm sorry I meant to bring up when Mr. Chan delivered his report. This is just to indicate that these are available, and if there are any questions about them, I am free to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions?
Is this a blanket? This is for everybody?
This is for everybody.
For everybody.
So we cannot--
I'll ask for the vote again.
This is a vote on the motion to approve the honorary degrees that are listed in Section 2 of your meeting books. And we had-- do we have further comments or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Duly noted. Abstentions?
Abstention.
Thank you. I think that carries.
You might want to amend the resolution under the circumstances, because I'm not looking to, quote-unquote, screw very worthy honorees, the vast majority of which are being entertained by the university correctly. But I'm not looking to disrupt proceedings. I only wish to make a dissenting statement. So I'm not looking for us not to have the votes for the honorees.
Mr. Chairman, can we divide up the ones that we have a question about? Let's move on, and accept the--
It carries. It carries. It carries.
Huh? It carries?
No, we need nine to approve a resolution. We need a majority, an absolute majority. So, yes, we can amend the resolution and remove Mr. Kushner's name from it, and I moved it. I will accept that amendment as a friendly amendment, and therefore, the new motion is before you, honorary degrees without Mr. Kushner. Now may I-- will everyone who approves, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposition? Any abstentions? That carries. I think there's no need for a resolution on Mr. Kushner under the circumstances.
Should we-- Mr. Chairman, I think we have to either vote to table it or--
All right. That's a non-debatable motion. I'm happy to second the motion to table. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. Let's turn now to item number nine, which is the SOC scholarships, SOC scholars. You will find the SOC scholars listed in your meeting book. I would like to move the award of the SOC scholars. May I have a second?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Are there comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? That concludes the public business of the board meeting today. Thank you for attending, and I'm adjourning the meeting.